Are we live?
I'm turning it off, sorry.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for March 16th. Thank you all for being here. We do have hand sanitizer out and about, some tissues. This is a handshake-free zone, so if we catch you shaking hands, we will douse you in hand sanitizer. With that, I will be leading invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We come to you today asking for wisdom as we go about doing the people's business in this time of concern. I want to pray for Officer Scrimshire from Hot Springs, the police officer that paid the ultimate price last year. Please be with his family as they cope in this very difficult time. And please be with the folks. Help us stop the spread of COVID-19 and the virus, Lord. Also, there's a lot of folks that are concerned and scared. Please be with them and let your will be done throughout this. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have quite a hefty City Council agenda, so let's keep that in mind as we're trucking through this. At the end, I will talk a little bit about COVID-19 and what the city is doing to prepare and respond. And I think we'll actually have a little bit of that discussion as we go on. Y'all have received a copy of the March 2nd City Council minutes. Is there any discussion on that? If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I have not received any public comment cards, so we'll move on to the financial statement review. Ms. Vega, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So tonight, we're gonna look at the February 20th financials through the end of the month. And we'll start with our fund balances. The $850,000 fund balance is our capital improvement. The $120,000, the Fund 120 is our police and fire. It's at 305. Sanitation, we're 17% over budget. The street fund, we're 4% over budget. And the general fund is at 95% of budget. And we are $2.8 million over the ordinance 438 requirements. Our revenue, I have checked all this, double-checked this revenue because it's pretty outstanding. The county millage is up 2% over prior year. Franchise fees are up 7% over prior year. Street turnback is flat. County sales tax are up 10% over prior year. And the city half-cent sales tax is up 41%. No, city sales tax is up 41%. And the half-cent sales tax is up 41%. Big numbers. The street fund was up 11% to prior year. County millage is up 2%. State turnback is up 17%. And street aid is up 6%. And the sanitation revenue is flat to prior year. So the chart of police and fire, again, we're 41% up in our revenue. And we still have not made a transfer from the police fund to the general fund. That will be done at the end of March. We were gonna make those transfers quarterly. Our expense comparison, overall, the general fund expenses were up 9% to prior year. Every department in the general fund, every department, yeah, it's the general fund. We, this year, we budgeted for workers' comp to be included in the departmental budgets. And so that is part of the increase in employee benefits and employee personnel. So administration is up 20%, and this is primarily due to employee benefits and personnel in the mayor's office and finance department. We have added people to those departments. Police and fire, senior services, those are all up primarily due to employee, employees and benefits. Public Works was down 8%. This is due to personnel reallocation. And our building maintenance and our vehicle maintenance for 2020 so far this year is zero. And it was very high last year at this point. Public Works is up 21%, primarily due to contract services and personnel and employee benefits. As you know, Parks has got a new system and they're going full online. And that's where that is. The pie chart, it's showing that police and fire are at 54% of our expenditures. Public Works, 4%. Parks, 10%. Senior Services, 4%. City Services, 11%. And admin is at 8%. The street fund, overall, the street expenditures were up, I mean, are down 12% to prior year. For personnel, that's due to the reallocation of employees. And the overage in operating is $4,000. And that's due to unreimbursed third entrance design expense. Sanitation expenditures are down 16%. Again, that's due to employee reallocation. And the same thing that happened in Public Works. Our vehicle maintenance, we have not had any in 2020, and we had quite a bit at this time last year. That's it, are there any questions?
Councilmember Mosley?
Do you anticipate any changes from all the business activity or inactivity in relation to the COVID changes?
That could show up in a couple of months if, if people aren't allowed to go out and spend money in our sales tax.
I'm sure some of the, like Walmart and Kroger are probably gonna be way up. And some of the others, like restaurants, are gonna be way down.
Yeah. Yeah, the restaurant, I mean, the grocery stores are gonna be way up this month.
Toilet paper is gonna be way up.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries. The next item of business is I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have the third reading ordinance, 993, amending the annual registration fees. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas. Ordinance number 993. An ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, amending the annual registration fees for businesses and designating said fees to be paid into the police and fire fund.
Outstanding. I, at the last council meeting, there was a request for some information dealing with how much businesses currently pay in fees. We included the ordinance on that, which has a few hypothetical examples. It's been a crazy week, so I didn't get to sort of do a more thorough analysis than that. But that's something that can be done in the future. Councilmember Tierney?
Yeah, well, I also, at the start of the meeting here, I passed around some sheets. So everybody should look about like this. Because it was asked at the last meeting, why did we do the committee or something like that? Well, I've been on a committee on business license fees. I'm on the current committee that's doing, you know, the revaluation of elected official pays. And so I went ahead and just worked up what a committee would come up with, having been through a number of meetings dealing with this matter already. Now, I'm not a tax increase guy. I'm opposed to tax increases for the most part. This is not about taxes. This is about a partial restoration of business license fee that fell through the cracks when we made some recent changes. Unlike most cities that, you know, basically base their fees, large part of it, on inventory, previously, we had based our fees on a community service fee. Well, when the community service fee went away, well, the biggest component of our business license fee went away with it. So, you know, as the mayor mentioned last meeting, and also on the information that Ms. Vega gathered, you can see that, you know, some people were paying, you know, several thousand dollars a year on a business license fee. So, you know, that's, you know, that all just went away. So what I'm proposing is just to bring a small measure of balance back to the schedule of the business license fee. Now, it's been suggested that maybe we should, you know, consider the, you know, different, you know, things like franchise fees or something like that. Well, taking consideration of the cost of water and the internet and other utility kind of mixes oranges with apples. And only kind of serves to distract away from the real issue of what does it cost to have a business license in Mammell? That same logic applies to the suggestion that maybe building costs should be taken into, you know, permits like that should be taken into consideration. Well, you know, that's for property owners, and they don't have to have a business license to own property and rent it out. Mostly, the people who are leasing it from them will be the ones paying those fees. So again, that's another kind of case of oranges mixed with apples. So the sheet I passed around compares the actual cost of doing business in Mammell with our immediate neighbors of Little Rock and North Rock. And since I'm in a unique, you know, position to do this comparison, owning and operating businesses in both of those cities, I use my North Little Rock store as a baseline and adjust the inventory for what it would be to cost if that store were located in Little Rock with the exact same inventory. And then I compared both of those with what it would do to, would cost to have the exact same business in Mammell. And as you can see on the sheet, like in Little Rock, it would cost like over $300. In North Little Rock, it costs $244. Mammell, 25. So there's a big difference there. Now, to compare apples to apples, I then compared the costs of, you know, the doing business to the chamber of commerce fees in North Little Rock, Little Rock, and Mammell. That's something that's already been adjusted for population. Now, as you can see on, and then use those, the percentages of those compared to what their business license fees to come up with a percentage if Mammell was charging a similar percentage. And basically, everything I looked at comes up, we should increase our rate by 500 to 600%. Now, I'm not suggesting anything like that. I can't imagine a committee would actually make any suggestion lower than a 400% increase of the fees just to bring us up, just to be average with our neighbors. You know, that's, you know, not what I was wanting to do. I wanted to do a major increase, just a small portion of gaining it back. Now, another reason why I was asking about the, make the change to where this funds the city in the police and fire, it's like one suggestion that was made in the committee at Little Rock that was successfully opposed was their suggestion to, one summer, just hire some college kids, go around and see who all the scofflaw businesses are. Having 25% of people who don't pay their business license fees, you could pay some guys just some money for, just for one month. And they can probably come up with quite a bit of, you know, earn their money in recovered fees. But, you know, I don't want somebody coming into my business knocking on the door, you don't want to see your papers. That's, you know, not something I'd want to have happen, not something I'd want to do to somebody else. That's why I suggested, let's go and just move that fee over to the police and fire because then you appeal to the local businesses civic duty of, hey, I want to support our police and fire. And it changes it from, well, this is a bill I gotta pay to, okay, this is supporting the police and fire. So, you know, what I've compared those, and it's basically just to keep it Mammell business friendly. It's a very small crease. Still, the only place cheaper than us is Conway. And like I say, just not having people come knocking on the door, we want to see your papers. So that's what all this sheet kind of shows you, kind of, you know, basically gives all the percentages like that. So I just wanted to explain what it was I passed around.
Thank you, Councilmember Tierney. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. One, I'm gonna remind you what I spoke to last meeting about the perception that we're sending to our citizens if we arbitrarily just raise fees. We already have a perception here that we're in financial trouble. As Ms. Vega just told us, in our reserve fund account, we have more than $2 million extra dollars over and above. We're in good shape. So we don't want to enhance that perception that we need money. Now, something new that I was thinking about tonight is the third reading on this. And as most of us know, small businesses often run on shoestring budgets. And what is a little bit of money to us could be a lot of money to them. And now you compound that, our timing is terrible on this, even if we were gonna pass it in the future. The time, this is not the right time. When I drove here tonight, I drove by Cheers and there were exactly two cars in the parking lot. Small businesses are suffering a lack of customers. A lot of them are right now. So I don't think this would be the appropriate time to do this for at least those two reasons. So I definitely will be voting no against it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 993? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 993. We have a motion and a second. Last call for discussion. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Motion fails. Move on to next business is Resolution 2020-4, approving a revised preliminary development plan. Madam City Clerk?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 996, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage and the revised preliminary plat for the development known as the M at White Oak Crossing upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
All right, y'all saw a preliminary development plan for the M at White Oak Crossing probably about this time a year ago, roughly. A few changes were made by the applicant in what I would primarily say was actually changing up the floor plan, if you will, and then adding a big undeveloped green space right through the middle. With that, I believe we heard a report from that, from Councilmember Tierney as the liaison at the last meeting. I believe we do have a representative of the applicant here, if anyone has any questions, comments, or concern. Is there any discussion on Resolution 2020-4? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I've been watching this thing through, and I watched it the first time around. And there's a lot of detail, a lot of unusual aspects to this whole thing. And it's, it's really been quite interesting to sit in the subcommittee meetings and the actual council meetings. And I watched the video, I missed that, the last formal meeting. And it's, there's just, there's a lot of, lot of things. There's been a lot of stuff that still has to be kind of done before a final development plan is approved. And my compliments to the folks been filling into the planning director role and the planning commissioners and the city attorney. It's just, it's been quite remarkable to watch this whole thing through. It's been very interesting. One of the things that was, had me going was the POA and the final bill of assurance and that sort of thing. And I watched the last meeting, and it looks like that's under control. That's something that'll be finalized at the, at the final development, when that's put through. So my, I'm not, I'm not worried about that at this point, I don't think. Should I be worried about that?
The bill of assurance is in very preliminary form right now, which is what our code requires, that it, at the time of preliminary plat, preliminary development plan, that it be in preliminary form. So before the final plat is approved, that's on the contingency list, that it'll have to be in a more final, detailed format, and that I will review it again.
Okay. Anyway, that's, that's quite interesting. There's a lot of considerations with North Little Rock and stuff like that. So I'll, I'm gonna, the, the planning function has done its, done its job, and I'm, I'm gonna vote yes tonight.
Good night. My face is never it so much as when they say, don't touch your face. But I have hand sanitizer. Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-4.
Second.
I think we had a couple motions in a single second to adopt Resolution 2020-4. Last call for further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next up for new business is the first reading of ordinance 996, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Mayor, I read ordinance 996. I did not read Resolution 2020-4.
What? Madam City Attorney, does that mean we need to go back and read that?
Let's go back and read it just to be doubly safe.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution number 2020-4, approving the revised preliminary development plan for the M at White Oak Crossing.
Thank you. At this point in time, we do have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Resolution 2020-4, which has been read, has been adopted. Thank you for catching that, Madam City Clerk. Next up is ordinance 996, accepting dedication of streets and drainage.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 996, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage and the revised preliminary plat for the development known as the M at White Oak Crossing upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
I believe we've already passed an ordinance for the first preliminary development plan. This is basically doing just what the title says. It's pretty routine. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer it. If not, it'll be on the second reading at the next meeting. All right. If we could move on to ordinance 997, the first reading, please.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 997, an ordinance amending the Mammell land use and map for other purposes. The Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
Outstanding. This is the, this is a property located on Diamond Park and White Oak Crossing. They're at the corner. It's on first reading. I believe Mr. Grummer can answer some questions if anyone has them. Mr. Mosley?
I do have some questions.
Mr. Grummer?
This is also kind of, this is another sort of unusual thing. And I've been contacted by a couple of resident, or at least one resident, about this situation. And they're worried about a number of things. And I watched the video from the planning commission meeting, and there was some concern about what's gonna be built there and that sort of thing. They're changing this to a, from a PRD to a C3, correct?
Correct. Scott Grummer with the City of Mammell, yes.
And that, that does one thing that, that makes, that makes me feel good is it kind of reduces the possibility, or eliminates the possibility for high, high-density housing in that, on that land. Is that correct?
That's correct. Currently, under the PRD ordinance, you can go up to a high-density residential. In a C3, multifamily is not allowed by right.
Can I understand that the applicant is not revealed? That there's, they're apparently, the applicant is the owner of the property, and they want to change it for a purchaser who wants to buy it with the C3. Is that correct?
That's correct. So when you look at the area across Count Massey and White Oak Crossing in North Little Rock, you'll find the zoning, zoning types are an I-2, C3, and R4, and RO. And then there's some C4 that is further down to the east on White Oak Crossing that is actually in the city of Mammell. So this parcel being on White Oak, they're wanting to, since commercial is already allowed by right as a C1 under the PRD, they're wanting to allow the zoning to be more conducive to that, which is around it, on White Oak Crossing, which is a C3.
What is the gas station across the street that's being built? What zoning is that?
So that was actually PRD, and they allowed that under a conditional use.
Okay, they did. All right. Now, in the subcommittee meeting, somebody finally got somebody to speculate what might be built there. And they, they said they thought it might be a gas station. So why wouldn't they go that same route?
So like, the, just to make sure we're setting the record straight, I don't know that anyone speculated that it would be a gas station. I think one of the things they said is that person sometimes does gas stations. Then I don't know how fair it is to ask Mr. Grummer why someone might be doing something that may or may not be true. We could talk about what some of the, the reasons would be. I just hate to put him in a position where he's guessing as to why.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, what is the worst-case scenario that somebody could put there on a, on a C3? What, what would worry us?
So I went through and I did an analysis of the existing zoning. And then the difference between what would be allowed as a C2 or a C3. And for instance, in, if it were zoned a C2 and not a C1, so let's say, go middle of the road up, by right, you could allow a hotel in a C2. But in a C3, it doesn't show that it's allowed by right, which is kind of odd to think about. You would think that it would be allowed by right further up the scale, but it's not. So liquor stores are allowed as a conditional use in a C2. But again, in a C3, it doesn't show up as allowed by right or conditional use. So I looked at worst-case scenarios as a C3. And the one thing that it does allow is for open lot sales, such as car lots. So I would think that that would probably be one of the worst-case scenarios, per se, that is allowed by right in zoning across the street in the I-2 in North Little Rock. So again, one of the things I did notice that is allowed by right in a C2 but not in a C3 is restaurants with dancing and live entertainment. So you would find that in a C3, that would not be allowed, which some residents may not like that closer to a residential area. So at least that's how I interpret the code based on how I saw it. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Could you, could you put a flea market there, an outdoor flea market, under a C3?
That's a good question.
Might be a better question for the city attorney.
I have the, I have the C3 additional commercial, commercial uses pulled up. You might be able to put a flea market in a different zone that would also be included. But I can read you the additional uses that are allowed in C3, if that's helpful.
I've actually got that right in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I just...
I don't see flea market listed.
I just, I just find it interesting. I haven't had a chance to digest this, so I'm glad we have three readings. And I know Mike Fisher voted against this, I think, at the planning commission. He was worried, it seemed like he was concerned, I think.
I think he voted against it.
Okay. From, from what it sounded like there on the video, I had a hard time with the video, actually.
I believe he voted against the zoning, not the...
Not the land use change. So it was unanimous with the exception of one who was absent from the meeting for... Not the land use change. So it was unanimous, with the exception of one who was absent from the meeting for land use change, but for the zoning, there was one against.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself here. There's two, two things here.
Right. And if you need me to describe the difference between land use and zoning, for clarification, let me know, but...
Okay. Would anybody else like to hear it real quick? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead.
Well, so your, your land use is just the general, uh, how you want to utilize the land in the area, so, such as residential, commercial, industrial. Uh, when you get into the zoning, then you get into the specific uses within those land uses, such as low-density, high-density residential, or specific, um, industrial or commercial uses such as C1, C2. But land use-wise, again, currently it's as a PRD planned residential development that does utilize some commercial, 4%. But, uh, so they're wanting to change it from a PRD to an actual commercial land use.
At this point, I, I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this. I want to hear some input. I know there was a couple of residents, I think they were gonna show up at a subsequent meeting here. They couldn't make it tonight, and see what they have to say, and maybe visit with Mr. Fisher and see what, what bothered him about it, and that sort of thing. But I just, I, I felt like we ought to probably kind of pay a little bit of attention, more so than maybe normal, but that is an appropriate area for commercial. So I, you know, I have no problem with, with commercial, in the, in the general sense of it, because I think that's gonna be a corridor along there, and that's just the way it should be. So, um, but right now, I don't object, but I'm, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for it yet either. But thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
I guess I might say that, speaking to the, the senior Planning Commissioner today, he said, I could quote him. He said, "One of the, uh, differences between the PRD and the C3 is that the PRD would allow for multifamily residential up to 34 units per acre, and the C3 would not." So, um, that was one of the things he wanted me to point out.
That, that, that sounds like a good reason to be considering doing it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I thought this might be helpful. Mr. Grummer had an excellent write-up in the Planning Commission packet, um, for this. Would it be possible to have the Planning Commission packet for this section included in the next council meeting? Uh, because Mr. Grummer wrote an excellent, multi-page summary of why the Planning Commission recommended a due pass to the City Council for this, and it explained a lot of the reasoning behind commercial, and then, they could go right across the street and do the exact same thing outside of our town. So I, I thought that would, it was extremely well-written, and I appreciated it. It really helped me understand it. So if, if we could add that to the packet for the second and third readings, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Are you referring to the zoning, or the analysis?
The analysis that he prepared.
It's in there. It's, it's behind the next ordinance.
It's already packed in here.
It's, it's support material for Ordinance 997.
Oh. Y'all must have been-
For 998.
See, y'all were so good. You did what I asked already. Thank you for being so prompt with that.
I knew you'd ask that question, but you are correct, and there was a, a pretty thorough analysis. And it was interesting to see, I think, Mr. Grummer's done a great job picking up on short notice and trying to, um-
Oh, yeah, it's page 50 and 51 of the packet. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there any other discussion on Ordinance 997? Seeing none, it'll be on second reading at the next City Council meeting. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read Ordinance 998, amending Maumell's zoning map.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 998, and ordinance amending the Maumell zoning map and for other purposes.
Thank you. That, so this is the, the, it goes right along with Ordinance 997. I will point out also, both of these have a really handy map of not only Maumell's area, but we, uh, Mr. Grummer included the North Little Rock zan- zoning and land use, so that you could see the stuff that's right across the street there, which I found pretty handy. If there is no comments, this will be on second reading at the next City Council meeting. Seeing none, we will move on to the White Oak Crossing and Country Club Parkway Roundabout Study. I think we are going to hear a presentation. First of all, I owe y'all a little bit of an apology. I wrote up this email on Friday, and attached certain documents for y'all to get a chance to review over the weekend. And it was so important that, um, I think I wanted to proofread it before I hit send, and I didn't hit send. So it sat there on my computer open, and y'all should have received a copy of it this morning-ish. So, um, if you've had a chance to take a look at it, great. One of the reports was 180 billion pages, is that right? But what I'd like to go ahead and do is introduce the engineering team that's, uh, working on the roundabout and handled this study. We have Mr. Brian Vines, the project manager for this, and y'all may recognize the business development manager, Mr. Mike Watson. Floor is y'all's. Are you giving a presentation, or was I supposed to do that?
Well, I guess we didn't clear that, what we were gonna do on that. But, uh, as, as the mayor stated, I'm Mike Watson, and we work for Half Associates. And our office is located at 10-800-FINANCIAL-CENTER-PARKWAY-Suite-500. And Brian Vines is the project manager on this project. And what he's handing y'all right now is 100 and, well, the thick one is 193 pages. It's the, it's the report that he sent out, which is about 22 pages long with all the appendixes. Now, the interesting thing is, as part of this study, we did a survey, and the city put it out on Facebook. We got 1,257 responses in less, in a little over a week, which is really good. I mean, we did one in Fort Smith, and it was out for several weeks, and we got 400 responses to that. What you'll find in the big, uh, report is also, we just left it wide open. One of the questions was, provide any comment you want to. I would suggest you look through that. Some people were very insightful. Some people didn't have a clue. So, but just look through it, because it talks about everything, from replace the fences in Maumell, open short marshay back up, roundabouts are crazy. Why did we put in an interchange? I mean, and then, I love the interchange. I mean, it was just, you know, one from the other. So you had both opinions at both ends of the, the spectrum there. But, uh, we, we, we have studied the area, and so, um, go to the last page on the short one, Tina. I'm sorry, the, the short one, yeah.
Not that one.
Not that one. That one. Okay. If you can see that, we looked at the entire area of, uh, this area when we were looking at it. And so we looked at the existing roundabouts that are on Country Club Parkway. We looked at an area where there's a proposed intersection to connect White Oak Crossing and Country Club Parkway. And then we looked at the, uh, on down the road where White Oak Crossing and Diamond Park come together. Actually, it's exactly where y'all were just talking about, the piece of property that's looking at being rezoned. So we studied those four intersections, basically, and we got turning movements, and so that's what I'm gonna do now, is turn it over to Brian. Brian's the traffic engineer, so he looks at that and comes up with the conclusions. And then if you go to the very end, we've got a conclusion in there. So, Brian?
And this, this report is the one that I emailed you today, so you do have a copy there. So, thank you. Brian?
All right. And I'll just kind of summarize the report, so we don't have to read the whole thing. So as Mike mentioned, we did a, this is the area that we studied. We counted in the three smaller circles. We counted those three intersections on the same day, so we get an idea of the amount of traffic that's out there. Prior to us doing that, right after the interchange opened, the city did two counts out there. And I think the first one was 5,000 cars a day. The second one, we had 6,000 cars a day. So it's growing. As more people see the benefits of cutting through to new, use the new interchange, the volumes are growing. So we can see that continuing to grow. Right now, there's not really a problem. I did notice at the Diamond Park, White Oak Crossing intersection, there were a number of times that the southbound traffic almost made it to the roundabout there on the north. Took them about a minute and a half to clear out. So it was, it was pretty consistent, but that's about 90 seconds of delay. Won't take long. People will start thinking, well, is there another route I can go? So what we were looking at is, how can we get people from Country Club Parkway to the new interchange efficiently? The three, the, what we tried to look at, the two main ones, is the big circle was going to connect Country Club Parkway with White Oak Crossing. The other was to let them go on up to Country Club Parkway and Diamond Park, turn south, and then put a roundabout then, a roundabout or other intersection improvement at White Oak Crossing and Diamond Park. To sum it all up, the two roundabouts on White Oak Crossing, and we're not looking at doing both, it's just do this one or do this one. They both worked really well. So then we looked at, well, what's the better option? With the development at Diamond Park and White Oak Crossing, you've already got the, I guess that was the jump zone. You've got the gas station coming in, and the development you were just talking about. We're gonna impact businesses on those corners, and you wouldn't have that as much at the one where we don't have an intersection. The other benefit to that one is we can construct most of those improvements without impacting the traveling public. They can drive right on past. We can do most of the work, and then it's just the changeover right there at the end where we open the roundabout up. So it'd be less impactful for the traveling public, less impactful for businesses, and a little easier to construct. And it was, I've done multiple online surveys, never had one. Matter of fact, you can probably sum up the last four I've done. We still didn't get to the amount of responses you guys got in a week, so that was very impressive. So our preferred alternative is to put a roundabout there at Country Club Parkway and White Oak Crossing. You can see that circle's a little bigger than the others, it's because we've got a little more ground to cover. So we're looking at more of an oblong intersection. And Tina, if you could bring up the other-
Which one?
The, the longer one.
The big one?
Yeah.
Well, that's, yes, that one.
Let me this one.
There we go. And it'd be the next page. This would be more, this is just, it's not designed. It's very preliminary. But you can see it's more oblong than round. So it wouldn't be a round intersection, but more of a oblong. And that's because we've got a little more ground to cover in there. We're also constrained. We've got the lift stations there on the left, and then we've got the drainage there on the right. So we're a little confined to just make it round. The other thing that you have to look at, if you make it round, is you get big enough. The roundabout gets big enough, then people start to travel faster, and then we have four different intersections instead of a single intersection. So that's what we're trying to balance here, is not get it too big, but to make it function as one, instead of four. And with that, are there any questions?
Yes. Uh, y'all, um, also looked at the Salone Forest?
Yes. And that's, I think, the next page? Okay, maybe it's the one more. On this one, if you were headed from left to right, eastbound, right now, that street just goes straight through. One of the things we looked at when we first looked at the area was this, very highly dangerous. What you're wanting to do with a roundabout, the whole function, is to calm the traffic, to slow them down. Typically, you want them to be about 20 miles an hour or less. This one, they can just fly right on through. So what we're recommending there is on that western leg is to make a deflection in there, so that traffic has to slow down, and then they're more apt to yield to the traffic within the roundabout.
So one of the interesting things is, as we were talking to different engineering firms, several pointed out that when, when not even prompted to look at that roundabout, that the safety and how that roundabout functioned could interplay and interact with the other roundabout connecting White Oak Crossing to Country Club Parkway. So I just wanted to bring that up here. Um, there are some lights, I believe. Councilmember Scott, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I was curious how much cooperation from North Little Rock would be required.
Would be required.
If we were going to do the oblong.
So-
How much of that is in North Little Rock's territory?
I'd like to say that about affects them half and half. When I spoke with Mayor Smith, he, uh, said very little of it is actually in North Little Rock. Just as a reminder from where we were at with North Little Rock, uh, they seemed to understand the importance of that connection. And when we told them our goal was to apply for a Metro Plan grant, seemed very excited for the prospects of covering their portion of a 20% match. And I don't think there'll be any problems getting them to sort of jump on board. This is a prediction, which, uh, can go wrong. I don't think there'd be any problems getting them to chip in on a 20% match. It becomes a bit, a different story altogether if we're talking about, um, getting them to chip in on, on 100% of that. One of the attachments that was provided, uh, contained some cost estimates, uh, for this, which was, uh, pretty significant. Significantly more than the last, uh, roundabout proposal. I'm gonna say, do you have that screen? Tina, if you could, I don't want to guess.
Right at $2 million.
$2 million, $25,000.
There you go. So that is the, is that the estimate for that, for that roundabout, plus the?
No, it's just the one.
Just the one.
Okay.
But, but if you look in there, there's lighting, there's landscaping. I mean, there's a lot of big-ticket items that you could say, well, we'll do that later if there was, if money was an issue. It's the one that's just got the numbers on it, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one right there. So it's got, we've got right-of-way at $400,000. So I mean, that's a, you know, that could be substantially less. It could be more, but we wanted to make sure that we were covering having to purchase that large of a piece of ground. It only covers the roundabout that was the oblong, or capsule, or whatever you want to call it, so.
And so it might be one of those projects where, where a donation of that right-of-way becomes necessary for the project to go forward. I don't know that to be the case, but just something to think about. Uh, I believe-
And that, uh, North Rock would have less, it, the, the, the other roundabout that's by the pump stations would have less impact to North Rock than the one that you were just looking at at Diamond Park and White Oak Crossing. Because that's basically only gonna be half in Maumell, half in North Rock. The other one is gonna predominantly be, that one's half in North Rock and half in Maumell, because the center line of the roadway is the separation of the two cities. So if you move it to the west and do the oblong one, you only have that small portion of White Oak Crossing as it's turning to Count Massey. Go up to that one. So you're only touching them in that lower bottom right there, barely, is what you're doing there. And it also, that one allows North Rock traffic to continue on east without even having to go through the roundabout, basically. Now, when, if they were coming home, they would have to go through the entire roundabout to continue down Count Massey.
Does that answer your question? Uh, thank you. Next up would be Councilmember Tierney.
Uh, what were the costs as far as, uh, if we were to do the Diamond Park, White Oaks, as opposed to the oblong? What would the cost of doing that one be?
Cost comparison?
Yeah.
It would probably be, I mean, if you flip to, I guess, two more pages down?
No, one page.
One page, sorry. I can't remember the order. It's still a large, you, you notice we've got the approaches. I'm gonna say it's probably gonna be in the 800 to 900,000 for the roundabout. The other was 1.2 million. So it's, but you're also gonna be dealing with, you've got a business on the southeast corner and a business going in on the northwest corner. So those property values will be up.
Now, the M, or not the M property, the other property we're talking about, we're doing the rezoning and the land use change. I know that we'd be taking like a corner of that, and on your chart, it had like a, a box. Was that gonna be just, uh, if we ended up moving it over here, was that just gonna take over an easement area? Or would that affect anything of what we're considering as far as their land use and their zoning?
I-
I don't know that it would. Two red squares inside that property, and it looked like, you know, the corner of the, uh, it is another chart further back in, in your packet here. I'm not sure how far back.
There, there were some just schematics in there.
Right.
So that was probably just the schematics. It's not, that's not indicative or indicative of what would actually occur at that location.
I was wondering if that was just, gonna be just impacting them on the easement part, uh, which the city already has access to.
Well, see, and, and you'd have to survey all that. We really don't know how much it would impact them at this time.
Gotcha.
It was completely all surveyed, because that's just kind of a graphic dropped on top of an aerial. So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, these are still very schematic.
Yeah, very schematic.
What, what do you think the, uh, Mr. Mayor, the options are of us getting, uh, funding on this, where we can go with the, uh, the bigger oblong one?
I thi- so we've, we've been in discussions with Metro Plan. It's, it's, uh, the, the, the roundabout checks a lot of boxes that they're looking for, and I believe we're also talking about designing it- And I believe we're also talking about designing it in such a way that checks more boxes that they're looking for. So the future looks bright, but I, 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 it's, it's a grant, right?
So. Is it the type of thing we have to commit before we know about that part?
We won't, well, we're, we're, we've already committed the design money, which if, if the council just said, heck with it all, let's go away. I don't know, we could fight about that later, but I know. So until we get funding, much like I think the Country Club Parkway or the Club Manor Odom South, it's not committed until we, it's committed, right? So we, before we spent any money on the, the cost of it, we would know whether or not we had a grant. If that's what you're asking.
Yep, that is.
Yeah, typically, you're going to have to pass a resolution that you would pick up the 20% if you got the grant approved from Metro Plan. So you do have to make that commitment, but if you don't get the 30% grant, then you're not, you don't owe them anything. So, and the, the Metro Plan, they're requiring that the plans be, at least preliminary plans done for this submittal. So you've got to get it to a point to even submit because then these are, they're probably going to open up this request in April is what we're thinking. That's the timeframe we keep hearing as far as Metro Plan. And so time is little of the essence in that we continue to move on this if we can, so, yeah.
And we have been, we, we were looking to see if there's even going to be a chance to apply earlier, but we just didn't think we'd get the plans far enough along in time. And there's a smaller pool of money. And so we're, we have the end in, in sight all the way through the planning process. One of the primary purposes that I brought this here is to avoid as much as possible what happened last time where we get to the end and then people say, well, is a roundabout really the right idea? Is that what we really want? And so we started off at the beginning with a pretty thorough study, complete with a, a survey. The results are all in here, a shocking survey in, in my opinion, in that so many people liked or extremely liked roundabouts, and, and I don't remember the numbers, 25%, I think, extremely disliked or disliked. You have all these results in there. And so there was, I found it very illuminating because sometimes we just hear from those that are loudest, which may not be the most representative. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going back to the cost and kind of tying in on what Councilmember Tierney was just asking. With the Metro Plan grant, if we're looking at a total cost of $2 million, and some of that's land acquisition, some of that's the design, some of that's actual construction, what would an 80/20 match look like? Does it come off of the total price or is it just the construction piece? How does the 80/20 normally work in cases like this?
You seem eager to answer, Mr. Williams.
Well, on, on the last, Metro Plan just went out in January, and you had to turn in your projects in January. They did not cover any engineering expense, and they did not cover right-of-way acquisition. They did cover all the construction costs. The 80% would cover construction cost. And then you would still have to come up with your 20% above that.
So we're still looking at taking 800,000 plus off of the roundabout design then, if they covered 80%?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you're also taking, I mean, lighting and irrigation could be in those construction costs. So you'd, you'd have to eliminate the right-of-way, and you'd have to eliminate any, uh, they probably wouldn't take the contingency unless it actually was a cost in there, and then they wouldn't take the engineering fee off of it. I mean, we were just successful with a project in Greenbrier back in January. So they're having to pay all the upfront costs, and it's, it is reimbursable. So you have to pay the contractor, turn in your bill, just like you do on any other federal aid project, and then they remit 80% back to you, is what happens. So it is a reimbursable. So you have to pay it out, and you have to prove we paid, you have to prove you paid it, and then they reimburse you.
So we are looking at a big chunk of that, if it's approved, is going to come off of this total?
Yes, yeah.
And then one other thing, I noticed in the plans about pedestrian traffic, and I appreciate y'all putting that in there. I know Country Club Parkway has kind of become a, a biking area where they head out to the new interchange and just, you know, make a loop. Can you kind of walk through what that would look like from a pedestrian and bicycling standpoint?
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the reasons we put that in there. That is a checkbox that Metro Plan's going to look for. Because we're, it, at that point, it becomes multimodal. The fact that we've got the ball fields up to the northeast, you're going to have a school coming in. I mean, we've got, there's enough traffic generators that people could walk, that people are biking, and you've got the vehicles coming through. We just felt that it would be a good idea to add it in. Metro Plan will like to see that. And the fact that people are using it, we need to let Metro Plan know, hey, they are using it. I saw a number of pedestrian, I actually counted the Sloan intersection. I saw a number of pedestrians walking down through there. A lot of them were going out to catch the bus. But there were a number of pedestrians moving up and down the corridor.
Go back to the other picture. Go back one if you can, Tina. Yes, all right. The, it's hard to see, but the dark areas, that's your, that's where your pedestrians are going to cross the roundabout at. And then there'll be a sidewalk around it to get them around that. And the bicycles, you'd have to take out of the center of the roundabout too, isn't that correct?
Yeah, a lot of times with your bicycles, your pedestrians would go around. And the good thing with roundabouts is they only have to do one movement at a time. So there'll be a refuge area in those splitter islands. For the bicycles, a lot of times what we give them is almost a handicap ramp, but just a ramp so that they can hit the sidewalk. Instead of a normal six-foot sidewalk, we go with a 10-foot so that the bikes can get up on the sidewalk. Those that don't want to be in the roundabout. Your hardcore bicyclist, they're not going to do that. They're going to stay right there. They're going to go right through the roundabout. I've done both. I do a lot of cycling. Live in Conway, so I drive the roundabouts on my bike all the time. Depends on the roundabout, is if I get on the sidewalk. Or if I ride the thing. So it's, I think you've got, this is going to, it, traffic's going to continue to grow out there. I think you're going to continue to see people biking out there as well. It's a nice area. The scenery is nice. You're going through the woods. You've got good visuals. So I think you'll continue to see people walking and biking and using the area.
I see a lot of bike traffic heading out White Oak Crossing now, so I wondered about that. And one last question, and I'll be quiet for now. Was there ever any consideration given to making that a two-lane versus a one-lane? Did y'all ever go into that? Do you think?
We did.
Warrants?
We looked at the, the one-lane roundabout is more than you need right now. It would not be hard to add the additional. Where you would run into issues is we don't have a four-lane facility on any of the legs. So we need to actually get those to start widening, and then we could address that. The Counts Massey approach does tend to break down. It's the worst problem. There's not a problem in the roundabout, but it's the one that has the most delay. And what we can do with that one is actually have a right-turn bypass, which would be the start of having two lanes in there. So bring them in, have two lanes coming out, and then about Diamond Park, bring them back to one lane. So that's, that's how I would handle it. As you start seeing issues, okay, we're going to widen Counts Massey up to four lanes. Well, now we've got something we can bring into the roundabout, so you can look at it by approach at that point.
Okay. Thank you. Now, come August of 2021, this is going to be an interesting area for traffic.
Yes.
When the school opens, so.
Yes, I totally agree.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I think, didn't I hear you say early on in your presentation that we don't currently have a problem there? But we will in the future.
Yes, right now, you'd, the, the numbers aren't supporting that you've got a problem, except for southbound on Diamond Park. That one's already almost backing up to that other roundabout. It is 90 seconds.
Minute and a half.
And, and when we look at intersections and we classify them by level of service, 90 seconds is getting into a failing approach.
Well, that's from an engineering standpoint, but in reality, it's a minute and a half.
It's a minute and a half, yes.
Slow down, leave a little earlier, I can't help it.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not fussing at you. I'm making a point for everybody. Where do we stand on Club Manor and South Odom at this point?
I have some preliminary designs from the city engineer, and we're supposed to get the report to go with his recommendations here soon.
Okay, soon meaning this year?
Yeah, I'd, I'd expected to have them already.
Okay. Okay, well, now you've heard me say this before, maybe in these exact words, maybe not. I have to live with my conscience. And I always look at that. Now, this is a convenience issue. And I don't have a problem with doing this if it becomes a problem. We were just told that it's not really a problem at this point. I don't care about a minute and a half. Leave early, okay? Now, we have, so this is a convenience issue at this point in time. We have a safety issue in this town that we can address. That's Club Manor and South Odom. We've had some serious accidents there. I've personally seen cars T-bone so hard it rolled them down Odom. We're lucky we haven't had someone killed there. It's a dangerous intersection. I don't, I, my priorities for my conscience is we can do this later when we need it. But we need some kind of traffic control to help with safety at Club Manor and South Odom. And safety always takes priority one with me, public safety. So I would rather see us at this point slow down on this. And let's go back and try to fix the safety problem we've got. So, okay, I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, are people cutting through the ballpark parking lot now to slip over to make a left turn on, on the?
I, um, I see two city employees who happen to live in that part of Country Club of Arkansas, and both are shaking their heads yes.
I didn't know you could do that.
You need to try that.
And I've seen it also out there, so.
Is that a problem or is that helping at this point? Is this something that we should rely on or what, what?
Well, you shouldn't rely on it because it's not a city street.
Right.
Uh, and also when you have all the ball players running through the parking lot, and some of them are very small, it, it's a safety issue, is what I would say. If you're diverting vehicular through traffic through the ballpark.
I'm, I'm assuming it happens mostly on morning rush hour. It would go through there to make a left turn, so when it's piled up.
That might be a good assumption.
Okay.
It also is for the people coming north from up that way.
Yeah, yeah.
They actually get to that intersection before they get to the Diamond Park intersection. So I've seen them in the afternoons coming out there when there's nobody in the parking lot of the ballpark. I think they're slipping through just so they don't have to go through a roundabout and then go down and stop again. Now, I, I can't, I mean, is it, I've only seen one car at a time do it. It's not, there's not a huge problem that I've seen, but I'm only in there for 30 seconds as I'm coming through there some days. Now, I sat out there one day and watched the operation, just how it worked, but I didn't see anybody do it that afternoon. I will say that.
Okay, now, at some point here, and I, and I'm talking from ignorance, I'm just barely aware, is there going to be a road that somewhere connects some of those neighborhoods to that, that side through about natural trails? Is that correct? Is there going to be a road eventually? Is it on the map?
I don't know if that's connected on the master street plan.
I don't know if it's on the master street plan. There is an easement that's been acquired that will connect to Milligan Drive. Or, yeah, it's Milligan. No, it's the next street down from Milligan. Next street east from Milligan, it will connect there, and it'll come out where the, uh, well, where Mr. Bolts lives in there.
The natural trail.
Natural trail, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it would come out at that intersection right there.
All right. So that, we don't know when that would eventually be.
I'm not coming to the council asking for money for that, um, at this time.
Five years, you think, or no, no idea.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't have a plan for that.
Would it be, would it be a publicly funded road, or would a developer be in, have incentives to put?
Well, I don't, I don't know that any developers would have incentives to do it. The development that would most have benefited from it is already, you know, they're building homes there. So I imagine if that road were to be built, it'd be a public-funded connection. And so I think with that area just starting to build out and with everything else going on, it's not on my short list of connections to be made.
Okay.
But who knows what happens down the road, and I think we were prudent in, in getting those easements for a future connection.
All right. My, my whole point was just to find out if, if that was going to be upcoming to where it could drain some of that, but it doesn't sound like it would.
Well, I, I suppose it could be if the council wanted that road there.
All right, thank you.
But it, it would require some improvements. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to proceed with the design of a roundabout improving the flow of traffic between White Oak Crossing and Country Club Parkway. We have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? I'll just reiterate, that doesn't, the project doesn't necessarily go forward. It just kind of gives the thumbs up at this time for the engineers to really begin digging into the details of the designs.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, we did approve funds for this budget cycle, correct?
For the design, yes.
Exactly. So it's already in the budget?
It is already in the budget.
Thank you, sir.
I was saying, so we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? I'll just reiterate, that doesn't, the project doesn't necessarily go forward. It just kind of gives the thumbs up at this time for the engineers to really begin digging into the details of the designs.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, we did approve funds for this budget cycle, correct?
For the design, yes.
Exactly. So it's already in the budget?
It is already in the budget.
Thank you, sir.
I was saying, so we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? I'll just reiterate, that doesn't, the project doesn't necessarily go forward. It just kind of gives the thumbs up at this time for the engineers to really begin digging into the details of the designs. Uh.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, we did approve funds for this budget cycle, correct?
For the design, yes.
Exactly. So it's already in the budget?
It is already in the budget.
Thank you, sir.
I was saying, so we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? I'll just reiterate, that doesn't, the project doesn't necessarily go forward. It just kind of gives the thumbs up at this time for the engineers to really begin digging into the details of the designs.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, we did approve funds for this budget cycle, correct?
For the design, yes.
Exactly. So it's already in the budget?
It is already in the budget.
Thank you, sir.
I was saying, so we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? I'll just reiterate, that doesn't, the project doesn't necessarily go forward. It just kind of gives the thumbs up at this time for the engineers to really begin digging into the details of the designs.
Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, we did approve funds for this budget cycle, correct?
For the design, yes.
Exactly. So it's already in the budget?
It is already in the budget.
Thank you, sir.
I was saying, so we have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion on that? Last call for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we will continue to be in contact.
And I will say, just for Councilmember Saunders, this would qualify for the Metro Plan funds because it's regional, it's between Maumell and North Rock. The Country Club and South Odom, which I think is a safety hazard, I agree with you, is, would not be eligible for those funds, just because of the location of where it's actually located at, where this one's affecting a regional, because you could count the county in it if there was a access to Short Marshay, but, you know.
Seeing. Thank you. At this time, I would like to convene the Board of Sign Appeals. Y'all should have a permit from, a, a permit that was denied from Axon for signage improvement that I believe they've been trying to get for a while. Is it Mr. Siddique? Did I pronounce that correctly? It, it would probably be helpful for the council to hear from the applicant and from code enforcement to, to understand what was going on there. Mr. Siddique, do you care to go first, or would you rather code enforcement explain? Code enforcement, come on up, Mr. Carter. And if you could just give us an overview of what's going on here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Trent Carter, the code enforcement supervisor. Mr. Siddique has a, a sign that he wants to put, replace, and it's a gasoline pricer reader, reader sign. And the design that they have, and I know you can't see this picture very well, but it, it is an LED lit, direct illuminating sign. And that is prohibited in our ordinances by definition, Chapter 58.
Um, I, I do think that perhaps after this, uh, or now, or whenever, it's really time to discuss the sign task force and its, uh, uh, failure. May, maybe that's appropriate after this, either way. Does anyone have any que, I, I see a bunch of lights on. Uh, what, before we get into too much debate and discussion, I think it's fair to hear from, uh, the applicant. Is, do we want to hear from the applicant next, and then field questions from y'all? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Stand by, I'm sure we'll have more questions. Mr. Siddique?
Siddique? Siddique, yes.
Thank you.
Just a simple LED sign, maybe it was written a long time ago, direct light, but way back then, those lights were bright. Now, those LEDs are very simple, is, you know, they don't hurt any eyes or anything. And Marmell Boulevard, one corner to the other, they all have those LED price sign, except one Exxon in the middle. So, that's all I'm saying.
Um, so I didn't think about the structure. I see, I see four lights on. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Siddique at this point, or?
Yeah. Um, are you saying that there are other signs that are just exactly this, that are on the Boulevard currently in use that are exactly like what you're wanting to do?
Exactly. Every, every gas station from the start of Marmell Boulevard, they're all the same, pretty much the same.
Well, but, but a lot of that's in North Little Rock, too, and we can't control that. But what about in Marmell?
Yeah, this, right here, Shell Gas Station, right in front of you.
So, the only one on the, there's none on the Boulevard in the city of Marmell that I know of. The one that's in Marmell is the one right up here at the Shell.
And, and I'm the second gas station, so there's only.
The, the Easy Mart.
Easy Mart, oh.
Easy Mart.
Let's go one.
Yeah. Holy moly. Um, so, with that, um, let's just, let's just go down the list of folks. Uh, Mr. Siddique, you may have a seat, and if they have questions, we'll call you up, or if you want to say anything else, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Scott?
I was wondering what lighting options there might be that would have a, a sign that presented this way, but wouldn't be the, um, LED unallowable.
A question for a sign developer, but, uh, you will know that most every sign that you see now in Marmell, Kroger, um, I think Arby's just did a remodel, there are LED lights in those signs. They just have some lens that covers them. You can't see them, they don't project straight to you. So they're everywhere as far as the lighting, or the lamping. And it's for efficiency, they, they, they just, cheaper to use. If it had a cover or a lens on it that was diffusing that light, maybe. I, I don't, I don't build signs, so I don't know.
Yeah, so, uh, you were on the sign task force with us, and we talked about this a whole lot. And I've talked with, uh, Mr. Carter about this and the city attorney. The, I think a lot of the concerns that the sign task force had that we're dealing with this sort of direct illumination or blinking lights could be remedied with a, i-if we switch to a model that allowed us to measure the lumens, that is, the brightness of the lights. The task force seemed mostly concerned with the, with bright light shining toward drivers and pedestrians. Um, Mr. Morley, uh, was adamantly opposed to them and said that it just wasn't feasible. I've continued to do research on that. I think it is, our, our surrounding cities measure the lumens or the, how bright that sign is. Because quite frankly, uh, as Mr. Siddique said, the, the LED, uh, why don't you just hop, hop in here after a second, because I'm not going to get too. Um, the, 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 uh, there just wasn't that technology when we wrote the code that LEDs and their, as we know them now, were there. But don't get me wrong, some LED lights can be too bright. And it's, I'll, I'll go ahead and say where I'm at with the sign task force. It has been my goal to, the task force was waiting on me when I was city attorney to rewrite a section of code, um, and, or a section of that, and then get back. I, uh, briefly swore up and down I'd have it finished by the end of last year, and I did that in the middle of December. And what, what continues to happen is I say, I'll get to it, and it's right up at the top of my list, and I failed to complete that. And so it's probably time that I just step back, wave the white flag, uh, task, get, get the sign task force back together with a new attorney to pick up where I left off or throw it all away. And, you know, there, there's a lot of changes we've had since then. And that's, it, it's well beyond time for that to occur, um, so.
The reason, the reason I ask that question is because I don't think any of us want Marmell to look like the North Little Rock section of the Boulevard. And I know that technologies change, uh, but I think we want to maintain our sort of more low-key, a little more aesthetically pleasing, less flash and, and pizzazz, you know, than, than what you see on the Boulevard, because the Boulevard is jarring when you, when you drive down there, particularly at night. So, I think it's a lovely sign, and just if we could solve the problem of, um, the lumens, I think that it would, would be something that would work for Mr. Siddique as well as for the continued aesthetics of the city.
Mr. Siddique, please, you're more than welcome to participate, but hit the microphone.
So those, okay, let's take a regular sign. We put like four to six floor sunlight. Each is like forty watts each. Those bulb on the LED thing, they're less than a one watt each. So if you add them all up, it's not even reached to like hundred watts on that. And it's, I mean, I don't think, you know, it's not flashing or anything. It's just very simple, it's all over. I mean, I mean, I'm in this business for a long time. We used to put those signs with hand, and I can show you marks. You can't, when the fine come down on my hands all the time. And I used to own Shell, and Shell was the last company who went on those LED signs. They never liked the sign. And about six years ago, they gave up, and all the Shells have LED signs, so.
Do you know how bright these are? It may, it might be technical questions, but so, some of, some LED lights are very bright. Some are actually manageable or not so dense that it gives off light pollution and is really distracting for vehicles.
I don't think it, if, oh, I cannot give you, but it, the bulb, each bulb is like less than one watt. I mean, I mean, these lights are forty watts each in this one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam City Attorney?
I was just gonna, and I know most of you probably know this well because you've interacted with this sign ordinance and code section more than I have, but I did want to give just a little bit of background for the few of us that are newer. So, back in, ordinance 922 is what most recently changed this law, which has not actually been codified. So if you go onto our code sections online and look things up, which is what I usually do, it's not going to be included there. But there, it, that is where you have the provision that says direct illumination signs are prohibited in all districts. However, it did not repeal the section that's particular to, um, gas station informational signs. They have their own little special section. Um, and it does allow them to have one freestanding sign to include a changeable copy sign slash reader board. And I'm going to tell you what the definition of that is in a minute. Allowed for each street frontage. The size of the freestanding sign shall be determined by using eight square feet per pump with a total of forty-eight square feet maximum allowed. It, to include company name, logo, price information, et cetera, if applicable. And then the changeable copy sign reader board means a sign or portion of a sign with characters, letters, or illustrations that can be changed or rearranged without altering the face or the surface of the sign. A sign on which the message changes more than eight times per day shall be considered an animated sign and not a changeable copy sign for purposes of this chapter. A sign on which the only copy that changes is an electronic or mechanical indication of time or temperature shall be considered a time and temperature portion of a sign and not a changeable copy sign for purposes of this chapter. So, just to give, I, I think, it gives a little bit of background that there are special provisions in our code that do, are still in effect that treat fuel pricing signs a little differently than we would just, you know, an average sign for a business, or if you wanted to put up an LED sign with cute little sayings or something like that. It, it does have, um, recognize the special purpose for that type of a sign. And then just another note about the jurisdiction on variances. I just wanted to point out that it, the code says it shall be its duty, the Sign Appeals Board, to hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of this chapter for the erection of a new sign in instances where strict enforcement of this chapter would cause practical difficulties due to circumstances unique to the individual's sign under consideration, and grant such variance when, only when it is demonstrated that such action will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of this chapter, which kind of refers back to my prior statements of we have treated, um, fuel pricing signs a little differently in the code in the past. That's all.
Next up was Councilmember Vaprazan.
City Clerk Timmons, can you scroll down one more page? So, am I correct in assuming, Mr. Siddique, that the part we're talking about is just, is just where the numbers are going to be?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a tiny little?
The number, yes.
Tiny little numbers, okay. All right, that was my question. I just was trying to picture it in my mind, so it's not, it's not much light at all. Just being able to see that it's two dollars and twenty-nine cents. But, okay, that was my question, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Siddique, my second job in high school was working at a gas station. So whenever the distributor would call and say, we're changing the gas prices, guess who they had go change them? The owner would say, go grab the suction cup, run out there. And our sign was, well, yeah, it was as tall as yours is currently. And so I was the guy going out there and changing the prices every single time that the distributor made a, a price change. As Councilmember Vaprazan just pointed out, you're literally just having the price illuminated. It's not flashing, it's a constant price, just like we see everywhere else on the Boulevard, except for within our strip of Marmell Boulevard. Yeah, I, I, I sat in here when this council reviewed the Academics Plus sign, and that one was a little bit different. It was a ribbon sign that would have had messages, and they even agreed to turn it off at sundown and, and turn it on at sun, or, did I say that right? Yeah, turn it off at sundown. That one didn't pass, but this one is going to be fixed. It's just going to have the pricing. And I, I just don't see an issue with it. I, I think it's a, a, an area of our code that we have, have not updated in a long time. So, apparently I got somebody excited over there.
No, you, well, you brought up the Academics Plus, I was going to bring that up. So, yeah, you stole my thunder.
Yeah, sorry.
She aggressively turned off her light.
Yeah, I was a little bit aggressive in turning my light off.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll, I sat in the audience for that one. For the record, I would have gone for that one as well, because they, it would have, going to be turned off at night. And, um, this one, I did pull it up on Google Maps, just out of curiosity to see what the nearest house was. You'd have to go across a couple of fairways and a pond before you even got to the closest house in Country Club of Arkansas. I, I just don't see an issue with having an LED sign like this that's going to stay illuminated just to show pricing. I wish I'd had that back when I was sixteen years old, rather than going out with a suction cup and changing the price.
I thought those were magnetic, I didn't know it was.
Oh, no, suction, and you gotta do this whole thing with getting it up and.
Sometimes the number comes out and hits you on the head.
And people want twenty-nine cent gas, and, you know, anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask how compared to some of those signs along, uh, the Marmell Boulevard, like SoHo and over there by IHOP, that, uh, the big old flashing, almost TV-like thing, and it apparently is not going to be like that, is that correct? Okay. Um, yeah. How many gas stations do we have in town?
Three.
Three, I believe.
Three?
Kroger, I guess.
Kroger, they don't, they don't have this, right?
Yeah, Kroger Company don't use that.
And then we're going to have a new one out there on, uh, White Oak Crossing, that'd be number four.
Which I very much presume will be in front of y'all.
Okay. Uh, okay, the fair and equal treatment aspects of all this kind of jump out at me. If we, if we do it for one, we've got to do it for all of them. Would you agree with that, City Attorney?
It, it would al- always depend on the circumstances and the basis for doing it. If it were in, uh, an area where it were going to more significantly influence, you know, residential area or something like that. I mean, there might be reasons for treating one station differently from another, just depending on the circumstance.
Okay. But it would bother me to let one do it and not all of them, so my, my thought is we ought to change the law. If, if we think that kind of stuff's okay, we ought to just change the law.
And that's why I very quickly admitted my defeat. There was a whole committee, but it, that committee was put on pause while I was supposed to draft, uh, certain language. And the, the, the more distant in time we've got from that committee, the more difficult it has been for me to work, to fit the pieces of the puzzle back together. And I've been very hesitant to pass that off because it is a jigsaw puzzle half-complete right now. But the reality is it always seems to be second or third most important thing to work on. So, I, I think everyone, I, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to finish the sign code.
So, I, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no, because I think, I think we ought to just decide whether we want it or not. If somebody wants to sponsor that law, then that, then we'll, we'll talk about it, and we can go look at the Shell, because I can't even picture what it looks like. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with voting yes tonight. I'd, I'd want to see what it looks like, and I think we need to be a little bit more fair and equal and, and put it in the law. If we're going to do it for one, we ought to do it for all of them. So, I'm, I'm going to vote no tonight, and I'm sorry about that, but that's the way I think it ought to be.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't remember what the discussion was about, but we were having a discussion two or three meetings ago, and Councilman Gardner advanced the question, can that be grandfathered in? And I don't remember what we were talking about. But in this case, as of the twelfth of next month, I have been a resident here twenty-eight years. When I moved here, that was a Conoco service station. And we did not have a new mayor until the year two thousand, uh, two, yeah, two thousand. So, if there's a case, seems like I'm always part of the grandfather thing, but it, it, it always, if, if anything could be grandfathered in, this would be a case when it is from the original one, and for us to, you know, to change it. And indeed, if I heard that correctly while ago by our city attorney, that if it is undue hardship or whatever expense to the, did I hear that correctly, city attorney, that?
Practical difficulties due to circumstances unique to the state individual's sign.
No more of a issue than it is, but it has been there for years and years and years, and for us to just suddenly arbitrarily, oh, well, you've got to change it. It doesn't seem to me that it would be fair to do that. And I will vote in support of the, um, request to leave it the way it is. I don't think it's fair to change it.
So, I, Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with Councilmember Mosley. If we do it for one, we need to consider doing this for all. Now, and also, Ms. Scott made a comment. I was on that two-year sign committee, too. And I remember that one of our goals, one of our intent in looking at commercial signage was we want to preserve the hometown atmosphere. We don't want it to look like downtown, the strip on Las Vegas. We don't want it to look like North Little Rock. And, um, and I think we're just moving one step closer. That's one reason we don't, we don't have rotating flashing kind of signs. We don't want that kind of environment here. And, um, so I don't think I could support this unless we wanted to change, let everybody, all commercial change to this. So, that's my sense of fairness and equity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Williams?
Well, this is a variance request. This is, we're not talking about changing the law right now. But also, we have done it for one, maybe not us, but the Shell station has one. So if we don't allow this... So, if we don't allow this, are we gonna require that they take their sign down? I mean, the Shell station already has one. It's already been done. And so, I don't, I don't see, I don't, if it's just these small numbers that he's gonna light up, I don't see a problem with, it's not a Vegas sign, it's not the LED on a police car. It's just, just those, those numbers. I don't see the problem. I'm wondering, am I missing something? I mean, am I?
Aren't the gas pumps themselves LED? They're digital.
Oh, boy.
That's not before us tonight.
That's also an exception in the code.
No, I'm being...
Yeah, that's it, LCD.
So, Mr. Seek, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Except that...
If you do, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone.
Well, I just spent reimaging the gas station. We put all the new image, new pumps, and everything cost me about $120, $30,000. The $40,000 portion is, it comes from the Exxon, and the requirement is LED sign. So, that money's holding since September.
Do you have the sign already?
Sign is not gonna move. Sign is gonna, is the same.
The lighted portion?
In the middle part, they just put the number in. So, the Exxon part stays, the servicing part stays. On the number side, they just put numbers, instead of plastic number, lit number. That's it.
Thank you.
How does Kroger change their numbers? Do they do that manually? They do it manually?
But, did you have a question, Councilmember Saunders?
Yes, maybe I was confused. I'm easily confused at my age. I was thinking that you're gonna have four lights shining, or are you going to have LED numbers that you can change from inside the store?
Correct.
Because those are two different things in my mind.
Those are number, change from inside. So, instead of going outside, we just push the number, the numbers change.
So, the old, the old...
Electronic number.
The old-fashioned is they've got the little, like the churches, you often see where the letters fall out or kids praying, it's the same thing, you get them on this little plunger thing and pop them up there, manually change them. They're wanting to pull that portion out so you don't manually put the numbers and then have an LED lighted price. $1.50.
Okay, I was thinking it was something that's gonna shine in the driver's eyes or whatever.
Well, so, but again, and the reason we're talking about direct illumination is because the way you see that light is you're looking at the little light bulb, the LED, as opposed to back in the day when the ordinance was, it would have been a light shining.
Behind it.
Yes.
Through a filter or something.
But that's what was required. What was prohibited would be if you took this screen off to where you actually saw the lights. If that, I mean, that's maybe a bad example.
What color are the LED lights going to be?
Ooh, I don't know what Exxon...
I believe that the, there's gonna be two prices for the regular gas and the diesel.
Yeah, two prices.
And the regular will be red and the diesel will be green.
Green.
There you go.
More than I do.
Did, Councilmember Mosley?
Would you like to weigh in on this? Do you have an opinion?
So, in my opinion, I don't have a problem with the one right out there, but I have seen some that are very bright, right? But I don't know if the, and maybe the City Attorney knows this question, if we allow a certain light and then we pass an ordinance at a future time limiting how bright that could be, if someone has already had a sign up, whether or not we can require them to make it not quite as bright.
I would think that if we'd already approved it, it would make more sense to grandfather them in, since, I mean, you don't wanna make somebody pay an extra $5,000 that went, for something that was legal when they established it and got a permit for it. If they can change a light bulb and do it, they, I wouldn't wanna do that, but...
Or even a setting. So, to answer your question, I don't have a problem with the concept. I prefer them, because you can see the price better. I have seen some that are bright. I can't think of any that I've ever seen where the numbers themselves, when that's the only part that's LED, is so bright that it creates that light pollution at night, like some of the ones you're thinking of going down in North Little Rock, where they have that whole board and it is, it's like high beams.
That one here, at Ten Fitness, that big one there, yeah, it's huge.
And so, it's not gonna even have that many LEDs. I imagine it would look a lot more like this one, which, by the way, y'all haven't noticed, has been there for several years, right? And I'm not trying to be facetious, but just to, when you're, when you're talking about how it impacts you, that's how, that's how much it impacts you, that, you know, so...
One more thing. So, compared to like a name brand, like Exxon, Shell and all that, they have a restricted lights. I mean, they have their own definition compared to any other gas station, which is no name. They can put any light or anything. So, these are all Exxon-approved lights. So, must have done some homework, I guess.
Thank you. I have, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm still saying we need to just change the law, look at what, the brightness that should be allowed and go that way. I don't like the variance idea, you know, what if Kroger comes in, they wanna put theirs in, and are you gonna vote for it? I mean, are you gonna look at their situation and say?
I would look at their situation. If they're asking for a variance, I would look at their situation. That's all he's asking us to do.
I'm hesitant to do all these variances, just 'cause it's a fair and equal thing. I mean, this is something that we ought to just, it ought to just be part of the law. Do you have an opinion on that, sir?
I could step in on Kroger. I could tell you this, they applied, we denied, they didn't appeal. Mr. Siddique is appealing. That's up to you guys to decide.
In this issue, I believe they actually came out about a year ago and applied and were denied. And then there was an anticipation that the Sign Task Force and myself would get on the ball and do the things necessary to uniformly and in a wide scale make those changes. And that has been my failure in not doing, not doing the work so that the Sign Task Force could reconvene and proceed with that. Doesn't mean that you couldn't just pull that one little section out and run with it independently, but the whole thing is like a jigsaw puzzle, that everything builds on top of the other. And so, I don't know that that's the best strategy, is to just come in and take one little piece and change it, but the council can change that ordinance. Yes, so, I understand what you're saying. I think the failure in changing the law rests with me. And so, it's hard for me to say, "Well, just wait, and I promise we'll get to it next year." So, that's where I'm at. Whatever I said apparently hit more light, so...
I did have one, one other thing I wanted to ask of Alderman Holt over there. I wanted to make sure, we're not, we're not talking about...
I fixed it.
We're not talking about taking away the shells.
As Alderman Saunders had said, I was, I thought you wanted to leave the sign the way it is, but I saw the picture, you want to put them in the red lights like other Exxon service stations do. So, you're trying to conform to the Exxon mode of the way it is.
And it has to be Exxon-approved sign. I cannot design on the same thing. It has to be Exxon.
And he is...
I was afraid you were thinking we were gonna take away shells or something there. Okay, all right, thank you.
I still support him. If that's what he wants to do, I would hope that the city would allow him to do it.
Councilmember Holt, you are up.
I'm back down again, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner?
I think we've settled this. I think everyone's on the same page. I just wanted to reiterate, we are just talking six numbers. You got a regular and a diesel price. And, and those numbers will not be flashing. It's not gonna be Vegas. It's, they're gonna be static until you get the call from the distributor to change the price. And then you go in and punch it in. And then, I do think this is fair and equitable, because we have a process. He got denied because of our code, and now the fair and equitable part is he gets to come to the City Council and ask for an appeal, and that's what we're doing. So, I think it is fair and equitable, and I don't have a problem changing this. And if the other people want to come and apply for a variance, we consider each on a case-by-case basis. And then if we look to change the code down the road, fantastic, we'll do that too. But, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaprazan.
I am in favor of the new sign, but rest assured, Kroger's gonna come back, and the new gas station that's gonna go in is gonna want a sign just like everybody else's. So...
Well, maybe by then the law will be...
Yeah, if that's what the...
Maybe.
Mayor, maybe, but I just, I just want us to know, if he gets a red wagon, I want a red wagon. Just, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scott?
I appreciate the investment that you've made in the Exxon station. That's a lot of money, and it came into our community, and it made it a better place. And in fact, I'm gonna come and do some business with you tomorrow on my truck. And I just wanna remind the council that the residential sign ordinance was worked on for two years, and that was just the residential portion. So, the commercial portion is probably going... I hope it doesn't take that long, but it could possibly take that long. And I just, I just don't have a problem with the small amount of light pollution that will occur from that sign.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. Mr. Siddique, as always, last words. Are you said it all?
Oh, I said it all.
Thank you very much. At this time, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to grant the variance. We had a motion from Councilmember Vaprazan and a second from Councilmember Tierney. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the variance, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. Variance is granted, and the Department of Code Enforcement permits in buildings or whatever is hereby directed to grant that permit and work with them to get it installed. Thank you, Mr. Siddique, for coming out, and thank you, everyone, for discussing that. Next up, we, oh, we're gonna go ahead and convene the Board of Sign Appeals. Adjourn the Board of Sign Appeals. And we will move on to the Tree Board appointment. There are two applicants for Tree Board appointment, and there are two positions we are seeking to fill. I heard from Ms. Nash, President of the Tree Board today, who was wondering if the applicants had to come in. I said, "Well, I'm not gonna tell them no." There was concerns about COVID-19 and the like. And I said, "Well, I'm sure the council will consider that." Nonetheless, before the council is, Ms. Whitney, oh, I should've planned that out, Hargis, and Ms. Erin Hall.
To approve both Ms. Whitney and Ms. Erin to the Tree Board.
Second, second.
Y'all have in the council packet, there's some information on, we have a motion and second to appoint both of these individuals to the Tree Board. Any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, oh, I was told, I told Ms. Nash that I would say that everyone on the Tree Board's excited about their appointment. They've already been attending meetings and seem to be interested, excited and energetic. So, with that, we have motion and second on the floor to appoint these two individuals to the two vacancies. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? Congratulations. With that, we will move on to Resolution 2020-05, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2020-5. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a master equity lease agreement concerning the vehicles to be operated by the Mammell Police Department.
So, during the state of the city, one of the things that I did mention was the state of the current fleet of vehicles, and that we'd be coming forward with a proposal. I wanted to give you some broad, paint with a broad brush, and then Chief Pickard is here to answer any follow-up questions. One of the things we've been trying with the detectives' vehicles and narcotics officers' vehicles is using a lease as opposed to purchasing those vehicles, and that has worked pretty successfully. There's been some law changes at the state level that has basically made it so that rental companies are, now, what it is, is if they're leasing a vehicle to the city, they don't have to pay property taxes on the vehicles like they used to. So, there's sort of this modern trend, growing trend for police departments to switch their patrol vehicles actually over to a lease system. What is currently being proposed is six vehicles be leased for a five-year lease, right? So, that's what this lease agreement is. That is part of a bigger plan to switch the entire fleet over to lease vehicles if it proves as successful as we're starting to hear from some of the other entities out there. Nonetheless, what we're talking about is that first lease of six vehicles. We're not asking for a budget increase. They've got the budget for that. And I've asked Chief Pickard to come in and explain a little bit about their fleet and why they've decided to do that, either Chief Pickard or Captain Ivy.
Good evening. The mayor had asked me to step forward to talk to y'all. And if you remember during budget hearing, I said that I'm constantly evaluating our programs and how we can best utilize the resources that we have. And one of the things with the unmarked and the undercover vehicles was that the lease turned out to be a more efficient and cost-effective route to operate vehicles for those, for those divisions. And again, I told you that we were looking, I believe I told you, that we were looking at doing the same thing with our marked unit fleet. Captain Ivy has put in a lot of, a lot of hours getting the numbers right and working with vendors in order to make this a viable option. And what I'm proposing and what the mayor's put forward is it's six vehicles leased over a course of five years, kind of test the waters, to put our feet in before, or toes in before we just dive off into this program. Currently, we are replacing, or we have replaced 13 vehicles in the last...
Five years.
Five years. We have a fleet of 26 marked units. So, we've replaced half our fleet, vehicle fleet in the last five years, meaning that most of our vehicles are over five years or, are five years of age or older. And we've looked at the cost of maintenance required on those vehicles and the benefits of the take-home program that we have, and we're trying to increase that. And that's one of the things that will be handled with the leasing of vehicles, is we'll be able to provide some more take-home vehicles to officers and narrow down the number of officers assigned to each vehicle, which in turn lowers the mileage that each vehicle has, which in turn, when we go to sell them, because this is an equity lease, which means when we, at the end of the five years, we're able to sell the vehicles and keep the equity to turn back into more vehicles or whatever the council decides at that time. So, with that being said, we are, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. The force multiplier of the take-home vehicle program is something that we can't exactly quantify, but, you know, having these police officers with their take-home car is a benefit both to the officer and to the city. It spreads out our fleet so that it's not all located in one location, so that we suffer a natural disaster, aka the tornado that went through Mayflower several years ago. We don't lose all of our resources in one basket. Also, with the current COVID-19 issue going around, if one officer is assigned to a car, they're also more likely to take care of it, clean it, disinfect it. And you don't share the germs with the other officers as you're hot-seating these cars like we have in the past. With that being said, we looked at it, and it looks to be about $4,000 to $4,900 savings per vehicle by doing this five-year lease. Now, it's a large number when we start to replace an entire fleet, but I believe that the benefits are gonna outweigh that, and we can also budget for it as the years come up. It'll give us more of a, a number that we can handle and that we can plan for ahead of time, versus year-to-year having a problem with waiting on the state bib come out. It always comes out after we've made our budget, so it's kind of a guessing game when we're talking cars. And again, it's a trial run. It's something to get our feet wet and to see where we're at. And our current model of replacing half the fleet every five years is not sustainable. It's just, we're not gonna be able to maintain the vehicles. And that's another issue with, that I harped on slightly, is the maintenance. We, in the city of Mammell, we don't have the resources that Little Rock and North Little Rock do to run our vehicles, $200,000 to $300,000... We, in the city of Mammell, we don't have the resources that Little Rock and North Little Rock do to run our vehicles two and 300,000 miles. We aren't able to rebuild engines. We're not able to rebuild transmissions. And when we start to farm that out, that becomes quite expensive very quickly. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scott?
Okay. Do you think five years, is, is that the life expectancy of a vehicle, five years? Given that they're run all the time?
Right. With being able to limit the number of officers in the car, I believe we can stretch out five years. And I've used that as a goal, five years, because that keeps us under powertrain warranty. So that a lot of the major components that we would end up replacing would be covered by a warranty. And that's a, the two major issues are your engine and your transmission. Those are the most expensive things to replace. So if they're covered under warranty, we're golden.
And what are you thinking of increasing the fleet to? You said you have 26 now. What would be your ultimate goal?
Ultimate goal would be to provide each officer with a single unit assigned to them. At this point, we have 38 officers. How many? Thirty-eight sworn, but how many marked?
We have about 23 right now.
We have 23 officers. And we have sold off several cars recently so that the fleet has decreased the number. How many did you sell recently?
Sold six or seven.
So you're
We're currently down to around 20 cars.
The number that you're trying to get to is again?
Is 20
I think the number
Twenty-three marked.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six marked.
Leased vehicles on business.
Okay. And
Twenty-six marked.
When you talk about the officers driving their cars home, are those not only the officers that live in town, but live out of town as well?
No, ma'am. I would all, the way our take-home policy is, is only those officers who live in the city. What we would do is park the others at the station for use as we need them. And in the event of an emergency recall, they're able to jump right into a vehicle and hit the streets.
I think this is a good idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. One thing that I thought was kind of cool that we haven't talked about is they have the ability sort of through their fleet track, the enterprise, through the fleet tracking process to be able to let us know when maybe it's time to switch one officer out of a car and into, you know, from car one to car four because car four is being underdriven and car one is being overdriven. And so just that level of metrics that we could probably hire a full-time person just to monitor the fleet to that level of detail. So that, some of those features were interesting as well. Councilmember Williams?
So you wouldn't replace the whole fleet right off with
No, ma'am.
With leased vehicles?
No, ma'am. This is, again, this is a trial for us to see that this is exactly what we think it is.
You could probably most likely be thinking maybe two, two to three a year until you get your, your, your fleet all the way up?
I think we're looking at six the first
We have a 10-year plan.
Oh, so you do have a 10-year plan for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I think that's pretty cool.
And so that, I'm not so sure we had to come with a resolution for a, to enter into the agreement just for this, but because it's the big, it's the tip of the iceberg of what is supposed to be a longer-term plan, now it seems like the best time to, to kind of talk about that to the council. And this seemed like the best way to do that. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, so it's only, only the officers that live here in Mammell take their cars home? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the ones that live, say, up, up the road from Mammell, gotta leave them at the police station?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the way it's currently set up.
I believe they've also added a mileage for, did you put a mileage restriction in for, because there's some
For the unmarked, yes, sir.
Unmarked.
All marked units stay within the city limits. Due to the call-out and the nature of the job of the undercover and command staff and detectives, they get to take their vehicles home with restrictions.
I glanced at the agreement here. I don't know if I read it right or not, but I, I didn't read the whole thing. I just kind of glanced through. But we would still be doing our own maintenance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Then it's actually cheaper for us to do it that way than to have enterprise or to go into a fleet maintenance agreement with someone.
I think that's standard maintenance, not engine rebuilds.
No. This will be oil changes, gas and tires.
Okay, okay. That, that's kind of what I was getting at. Because I was going to say, what's the difference if we get down to the end of the lease, we've still got the car and the engine goes out, we have to fix it? So apparently not.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
I didn't think to look up the budget for 2020, but we budgeted four police cars this year, didn't we? Do you remember, know what the number is?
Two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Okay. And is that about normal of what we spend?
That is a little bit toward the higher end, I think.
Okay. Because you said it was, it looks like it's cost savings, but we're going to spend the money anyway on purchasing our own cars. So I was curious how that compared to
So, so if you, if you look at one of the last pages on here, and I want to draw everyone's attention, the projected costs show what it would cost for the leasing. And I think they've got a spreadsheet and all sorts of stuff.
That number's gone down.
Has it? Okay. So you'll see that the, the number starts off much lower and then gradually increases.
We've actually, I think
As each year, you add five additional vehicles to the agreement.
We've actually shaved almost $17,000 off of the first year.
The 2020 prize?
Yes. One-twenty-five-six roughly is our first year. Year 2021 would be 170. 2022 is 225. The savings increase as the time goes by. In 2023, it'd be 268. 2024 is 322. 2025 is 332. 2026 is 322. 2027 is 322. And that's, and again, we're increa, we're increasing the number. According to this plan, we are increasing the number of vehicles too. So that, but it's something that we can plan for almost roughly 10 years out.
And that doesn't include our equity when we sell them too.
Correct.
We've got some, some estimates, but that number actually
And that's what we're hoping to also increase. Currently, the average that we receive from our sale of our used police cars is around $2,100. Even if we double that to 5,000, that is a dramatic increase for us. And I think as long as we stay under the 100,000 mile mark, that in the, in the automobile world, that's a number that is kind of hard set. Once a vehicle gets over 100,000 miles, the value drops dramatically. It's like stepping off the deep end of the pool. It starts to immediately shoot down, so.
And I assume by 2029, any car that you've leased in 2020 has actually rolled off by that point. Is that right?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Correct. It's been replaced by that point.
That's kind of my, yeah. So we're, you're increasing the, decreasing the age of your fleet and you're just, you're keeping fresh
We would have, and the benefits with a younger fleet or a newer fleet is the fuel economy. As the years go by, these vehicles become more and more fuel-efficient. And older engines, they become less and less efficient. That's just the nature of the beast. And we're also able to get our vehicles faster according to enterprise.
Councilmember Scott?
A little bit of a dilemma is when we purchase a car, that's a capital expense, but when we lease, is that not an operating expense? Yes.
Okay, yes.
So that money would have to be transferred from capital to operating, would it not?
I don't, I, I'll have to verify with Shannon, but I think, I think not. I think we've done that. Yeah, I'll have to verify with Shannon.
That's just something to be careful of.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we will move on to Resolution 2020-6, expressing a willingness to utilize state, state aid street funds. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2020-6, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Mammell to utilize state aid street monies for the following city project and for other purposes.
This is the $300,000 grant that we've received to overlay Odom from Mammell Boulevard to Woodland. And we have to pass this resolution to get that money. Councilmember Saunders?
Okay. Just a curious question.
They're all curious questions.
Why would we not want to do this? Is there a downside?
Well, no. So it's, it, no, not that I can think of. It's 100%. We don't even manage the project. The state manages the project. So they, we don't even have to do the, all the paperwork. I mean, they kind of get the money and handle that project. We've been working with their engineers who have walked it, staked it out, the whole nine yards. Ah, here's a reason why you might not want to do it. Anytime you overlay, it can interrupt cars that are driving on it. We don't anticipate, you'll see, it's 100% paid for by state aid with the exception of right-of-way utilities and any, basically any additional city projects. We have the rights of ways. We're not messing with the utilities. And so it's, it's 100% paid for and ultimately managed by them.
Well, I move we approve Resolution 2020-6.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion in that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, folks. We will move on to Ordinance Number 995, the first reading of Ordinance 995, providing for internet auctions. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 995, and ordinance amending Section 2 of the Mammell City Code to permit the sale of personal property owned by the city by interest auction and to allow disposal by other methods permitted by state law.
We looked the other day, or a few meetings back, we changed a portion of this dealing with how, how much authority that we had to dispose of it. What we got into was not the value of the property as we looked at it, but the methods allowed for selling those. State law specifically allows internet auctions, whereas our code didn't specify and it kind of had a little more archaic. I believe I spoke with the city attorney who, after reviewing that, recommended that we then update our ordinance to catch up. Is that accurate?
I think that's correct. Yes. And it's been several weeks actually since we wrote this one and put it together, but we just waited since we had state of the city to put it on the, on the agenda. And it, it's pretty simple and straightforward as far as the changes to be made. It's just allows us to, to sell by internet auction as permitted by the Arkansas code. Might be easier if I just answer individual questions.
Good move. This is
Thanks.
Good change.
Yeah, but so advertising things in the newspaper like that when you have good outlets isn't always the best. But if there's, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I assume, I assume what this would mean was we'd be able to like sell, sell some of our excess cars, equipment, those kind of things that are, that are beyond their useful life. Is that how you
Correct. And so actually, it's those things valued over $5,000 that are, we, we are, we're having to come to the council to ask for authority to sell those anyways. This allows us to then sell it through a different model to hopefully increase the value we're getting. In fact, it wasn't uncommon too long ago, I believe someone, you know, we kind of sold an old fire truck and I believe someone bought that fire truck because they were the low bidder. And then they were just a reseller. So they were, they were counting on not a lot of people responding to that auction or that, that advertised bid, buying it. And then they get to advertise it the way they want and sell it for a markup. So the idea is that we can then go to sites like GovDeals and these sites authorized by the state for them to dispose of their property. And we just want to use that route without the old-fashioned post a notice in the newspaper sort of thing. So this is on first reading and will be on second reading if there's no further discussion. Seeing none, that will be the case. At this time, y'all should have received an email from the city clerk asking for an ordinance that came up after the council packet went up, which was Proposed Ordinance 999 to amend the city code to allow the fire department to better, the flexibility to better respond in COVID. Before we can get to that, I have to ask for a motion to have this item added to the agenda.
Second.
Your motion in seconds, there in discussion on that. Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. So first order of business would be the first reading of Ordinance 999.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 999, and ordinance amending Section 2-622 of the Mammell City Code to permit discretion as to when the Mammell Fire Department shall respond to emergency medical calls.
So, long story short, and I'll let Chief Ezel explain what's going on here in just a moment. Long story short, our current code says the fire department shall respond to all emergency medical calls. There's discussion about what happens in the event of a crisis where the fire department, well, I won't get into this. This would just allow the fire department discretion to choose which calls they're responding to. Chief Ezel, I feel like that was the worst setup ever and you can undo everything I've just said.
That was a really good setup right there. So basically what this is for, first and foremost, let me reiterate, we are not changing anything the way we're doing things right now. The ambulance MEMS has made the suggestion that on certain calls that relate to the COVID-19 virus, that if they so our dispatcher is going to stay on the line whenever you call 911 as they transfer it to MEMS dispatch. And they're going to listen for all of the key questions that go down. And then there's four additional questions that relate to strictly to COVID. And if they make a determination that the patient is stable, they're wanting to recommend for us to basically stay at home so that we limit the amount of people that are actually going to be staring this thing in the face. With that being said, everything else, if there's an immediate risk to life, we're coming. You know, and chances are if this gets bad enough, we're coming as well. But it's just something that with them making the suggestion, they're wanting to take the hit so that we limit the people that are actually exposed to the virus. That's what we're looking to do with this. But it, first and foremost, if there is an immediate threat to life, we're coming.
COVID-19 or not?
Or not, yeah. So I mean, that's not going to change. This is just, if it gets to that point where we're starting to get inundated a little bit and we want to scale back a little and let MEMS take that risk off of us to kind of minimize. So there's two people on an ambulance. We have two to four on an engine at a time that are responding out there. So take it from either four or six down to two. That's what we're looking to do with this ordinance. That's it.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Ezel or general discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
I think it's just more general discussion. I, I bugged chief about this earlier today and, and the one question I had was how this would affect response time. And the fact is, it, it won't because there, when they, as I understand it, when they call into 911, dispatch hands it off to MEMS for those medical calls. And they've not dispatched anyone at this point.
Correct.
They're going through the, the laundry list of questions. And if they hear that it's, it's not a medical emergency, well, life, life-threatening, then they just say, y'all stand by, we're good.
They may make the recommendation and that's what they're wanting to do. But like, like I say, right now, we're not changing the way we're doing business. This is just something that if it, this evolves every day. I mean, everybody's seen it in this room.
This thing rolls out and we're talking about these quarantine periods that people are, are seeing to have a firefighter and then his whole team have to take off to be quarantined, if that could be an issue.
Right.
That could hamper our ability to respond to actual fires.
Dramatically here in, in the city. So, so anyway, that's what that ordinance is for.
So interestingly, the, the police department is doing something a little bit similar where there's certain calls that they're wanting to take over the phone. The ordinances don't say that the, the police department have to respond to every call. I mean, it, it was just the way the ordinances were written under the Department of Public Safety. And then as they split those two up and were saying what the fire department would be doing and the police department would be doing. I had a few conversations with residents who, who were then concerned about longer time I had a few conversations with residents who, who were then concerned about longer times, um, and saying, well, now the fire department isn't going to respond if there's an emergency, and I, and I think the, the idea is, no, they're still going to all medical emergencies, they just have the discretion, if the stuff hits the fan, to make strategic changes for the health of, uh, folks. Councilmember Scott?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and have three readings on this ordinance this evening. Second.
And the emergency clause.
The emergency clause will come after. So we have a motion and a second, Councilmember Saunders?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Okay. So, is there any discussion on, uh, having the second and third readings right now? Seeing none, all those, does that have to be a roll call vote? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Unanimous, that makes it easy. Madam City Clerk, if you could please have the second and third readings of ordinance nine ninety-nine.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine ninety-nine, and ordinance amending section two dash six twenty-two of the Marmel City Code to permit discretion as to when the Marmel Fire Department shall respond to emergency medical calls. Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine nine nine, and ordinance amending section two dash six twenty-two of the Marmel City Code to permit discretion as to when the Marmel Fire Department shall respond to emergency medical calls.
We should approve ordinance nine nine nine?
Second.
We have a motion, the second, is there any discussion on the motion to approve ordinance number nine ninety-nine? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzhan? Councilmember Tierney? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Tricking it up there.
She's in live training, that's where it is.
Ordinance passes, section five of the ordinance is the emergency clause that declares the reason for an emergency, this is about the closest emergency clause to actually being an emergency that I've seen, uh, so I entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause. Uh, we have a motion and a second on the emergency clause. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzhan? Councilmember Tierney? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Mosley? Councilmember Saunders? Councilmember?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner? We're all awake.
Thank you very much, that ordinance passes. The fire department will have the authority to, uh, react as they see fit. With that, that concludes the new business, congratulations, we'll move on to Mayor's comments, which, um, the, the first thing I wanted to talk about is the city's response to, um, COVID nineteen. We, we've seen one of the things that the fire department has been doing, and I want to, uh, uh, give a special shout out to Chief Ezel, and also, uh, Chief Pickard. Chief Ezel, in particular, was talking about attending training on some virus thing, uh, it seems like, uh, a month ago, just about, uh, and has been rigorously attending, um, training, and so a shout out to him for following this from the very beginning. And, uh, if you want to know anything about how Central Arkansas is responding, uh, with its first responders, there is a gentleman in the building who can tell you every detail that you might possibly want to know about what they're doing, what they thought about doing, decided not to do, and what, how each hospital is addressing every single issue, so it has been very comforting to know, um, that someone has been following that, to that detail. The police department, uh, just today has, um, uh, what they're trying to do is limit police officer contact with, again, non-emergency, um, calls. Sometimes someone calls and says, someone broke into my car last night, or, um, my credit card, someone stole that, our goal is to take those reports as much as possible by the phone. Uh, again, the police department will be responding to emergencies, or in those cases where they, where a phone interview just isn't practical, but they're working on that. One of the first things, in fact, I, I got off the plane from DC, and, uh, before I got home, it seemed like I talked to the whole world. Some of the first folks were Chief Ezel and, uh, Nicole, Ms. Vogler, with, uh, Senior Services. The, what we've opted to do with the senior center is cancel classes, um, so there are no classes going on, the hours of the cafe have been limited from eleven to one, transportation is still ongoing, uh, there's a lot of folks going, that use that to go to the grocery store, or use that for their medical appointments, um, and, uh, no large gatherings there at the, um, um, Center on the Lake. That, and I think it is a full-time job, monitoring incoming information, uh, with resources for, uh, COVID nineteen. I think you could just sit there all day and pop up one, you know, uh, press conference and another press conference from the governor, then the president, plus there's, there's been a flood of resources, and just sifting through that is, um, quite interesting. So, that's a little bit of an update, I'd be happy to answer any questions, inevitably, I've left something off. Also, feel free to open the floor if you think there's something that we should be doing, that we're not doing, something that we're not doing that we should be doing, either way, or I may have said the same thing twice. Council, uh, and let's just open the floor for a, a discussion, we're not in business, so, uh, please shout out. Uh, Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make it crystal clear, you implied it, you said that lunch, or that the food hours, cafe hours are eleven to one. They are serving lunch, but they are not serving breakfast, in case somebody asks you, so just make it clear to them.
Thank you.
For the time being, no breakfast.
Thank you. And the, the goal, the, our, our priority was to target those seniors that needed a, that one nutritious meal a day, and allow them to get that without, um, um, and just going unfed. And that, that has really been the, the one building that we've just kept a hawk eye on. Uh, Councilmember Mosley, I saw your light was on.
Uh, yeah, when you guys were up in Washington, uh, was part of the conference in any way dedicated to how cities should be responding to this COVID thing?
To a certain extent, yes, um, um, so a, a, a large portion of the agenda was set out, I think, well before they, uh, understood what was going on. Probably the most engaging and interesting speaker of the whole thing, though, was a, uh, doctor who's a senior policy advisor for the National Association of Counties and Cities Local Health Officials that had a, a pretty interesting talk on what was going on. At that point, I feel like we, we were on the other side of the looking glass, and it wasn't until I, we flew back here to realize that we'd kind of stepped through, but, uh, largely, I mean, folks are saying exactly what the CDC is saying, that, that you just contain it through. I don't want to list them, but the, you know, the, the standard hygienic, uh, uh, and distancing tools that we've all been hearing about. There's a lot of this, the problem when you're reaching out to national organizations to figure out how cities should respond to it, is the bulk of that information isn't really all that helpful, because it's dealing with, um, uh, certain waivers and HUD programs, or these, these, these systems and or, or services that a city like Marmel just doesn't have in place. I think I've got a lot more interesting information about the nuts and bolts on how to handle some of those things, just listening to Chief Ezel, actually. You know, we're not looking for waivers of a particular food program from these big, you know, um, entities that, that you're seeing some of the bigger cities need that sort of assistance from. That said, we had Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Gardner, and City Clerk Timmons, all of who are more than welcome to jump in and, and say what you learned. I learned elbow bumping was a thing, instead of hand shaking.
Not cool, though.
It's not cool.
Um, one thing that I just wanted to, to go back to the Center on the Lake, um, I know several restaurants, including some in Marmel, have closed their dining areas. One thing I'm thankful for with Marmel Charter and Pulaski County Special School District is that they're doing sack lunches for pickup. Has the city or Ms. Vogler planned a week from now, or even tomorrow, for all that matter, um, closing down the cafeteria and possibly preparing takeout lunches?
Absolutely, that was one of the, the first things we, um, uh, considered, was whether or not you just close it down and provide, we have a fair number of people that we pick up in the shuttle and drive to the, to the building to eat the meals, and so you can almost reverse that and have them pick up the meals and deliver it to, uh, certain folks, so yes, we've been looking at it, in fact, I, I think Thursday morning I met with Chief Ezel and, and Nicole, uh, Ms. Vogler, about a multitude of different options, primarily, and, and first and foremost, looking at the, um, uh, Center on the Lake. So yes, we, we have, I don't think we're there yet, um, it is, with, Thursday was a wild day, as you started to get word of, it, it seemed like every city was trying to out, and every, every government entity was trying to outdo the next by, by being one step safer, is how I felt, so it was like in the morning, people were limiting hours, and, and then by the afternoon, they're limiting services, and then by the evening, they'd shut down their community centers, I think our community center is the last community center in the region still open. I, I, I don't know what the reasoning for that is, o- other than just general quarantining. I don't think we should be, some cities have closed their parks down, which is exactly where I think we want to direct people to the, to those areas, um. So, it's, it's a, it's a moving target, and as always, I'm very, uh, open and receptive to different thoughts on doing it, I feel like I'm just, just watching the twenty-four hour news cycle to keep it on, yeah.
It does, the, you wake up in the morning, and it's not the same when you go to bed at night, it, it's happened so fast, and the thing about the conferences, that's the first time I've ever been anywhere where it was a handshake-free zone. So it was already beginning to be on, you know, the, at the forefront of everybody's mind, but we, I don't think when we were there, just last week, we had any idea we would be where we are today. And even coming back, like, uh, we were, we were at the Capitol and the Senate on Wednesday, and Thursday morning, they shut down both those buildings, and we, we had just been there, and we, you know, we, i- it's been mind-boggling, it's just been so scary, it's apocalyptic to me. I've not seen anything like this in my lifetime.
There is a stock market.
One of my takeaways from the epidemiologist. Epidemiologist, one of my takeaways from what he said is that we are, um, we are constantly behind where we need to be. So what we're doing today is hopefully going to help in two or to three weeks, but he's, we're, we're behind, and we don't know where we are, and so that's, that's one of the reasons, wh- while, while some may think it is an overreaction today, I hope so. I hope that in two to three weeks, it's, it's not that bad, but it's, we're behind.
Well, he was being interviewed, and the lady that interviewed him, uh, she said, uh, you know, is it like the flu where, you know, when the weather starts to get warmer, then, um, you know, the, the flu kind of goes away, you don't have the problem that you had, and, and his answer was, we just do not know. I mean, he is one of the premier epidemiologists in the country, and he said, we just do not know, this is brand new. And that's the scary thing, is this uncharted territory with a, with a disease.
And so I, I encourage all of y'all, if you, um, to continue monitoring things, if you think we need to be doing something that we're not, let us know, if you think we're doing something we shouldn't, let me know, um.
I'd, I'd mention one thing, I, just before I came tonight, I think I saw somewhere either Trump or somebody was discouraging gatherings of over twelve people.
Yeah, we're, we're, we are discouraged. I am bathing in hand sanitizer.
So I don't know that.
That has changed, it was, it was fifty yesterday. And, and it was a hundred before that, two fifty.
One day, and that, you know.
So I mean, we, we don't have another meeting for three weeks, and it may be a whole different world in three weeks, so we'll see what we're doing by then, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, anyways, so that's that. I do, it's, it's been a long meeting, but i- i- if it's ever come to head, um, I really need to step off the SIGN task force and and just say, this isn't getting done with me, it needs to be done, um. And so I've talked, I have talked with the city attorney who I think looked at some of my notes and ran out of the room screaming, um.
I don't know if she started over.
Yeah, and, and, and maybe that's the right, I, I, so, it's, it's probably about time to call the, the SIGN task force, um, and I've asked. Did we close it?
Yeah, we did.
I actually, yes, yes. What's that?
I was going to go home and still be on the committee.
So, um, so there's that. So maybe I'll be reaching out to, I don't know if now is the best time to have meetings in, in a room or not. So, that concludes Mayor's comments, um, City Councilmember comments. Councilmember, Mr. Mosley?
Sorry, Vapurzhan. You're looking at me like, oh, no. I wanted, I wanted to thank Scott Drummer for all the stepping in on the planning and stuff like that, it's been pretty impressive watching you on these videos and in person and so on, so I, I appreciate you doing that, that, I imagine the mayor really appreciates it. One other thing, on the highway, uh, meeting that we had last week, uh, Alderman Holt and Tierney and, and Scott were there, and, and they can verify whether I heard him correctly or not, but I, I asked a question, and the question and answer to Scott Bennett, because he was throwing out some projects, he said, if this tax thing passes, there'll be this, 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 and this, and I asked him to, and one of them was, uh, paving and adding a, a different, another lane, both directions on Marmel Boulevard from Count's Massey on toward four thirty. And I said, I asked him, I said, is that something that is a possible deal, or if Marmel residents vote for that, will that be a sure deal? And he said, that will be a sure deal. Did I hear him correctly?
Yeah, he did say that. Chris Elsner said he's rea, he's already retired now, no longer there.
You got it on video? Excellent.
He's not going to be the director, though, right?
He, he committed him, they are all just going like this, so.
Kind of tried to take, uh, claim of, uh, the, uh, third entrance, too, although several speakers pointed out, no, that was paid for by Marmel.
Yeah, I, I pointed that out, too.
Very clear that, no, you don't take credit from that, he did not argue either.
And, and after the, after the meeting was over, a constituent asked about, uh, the additional lanes that have been talked about going on, on four thirty bridge. And he said, is that part of this tax thing, and, uh, Bennett, this was just the three of us standing there, and Bennett said, no, this is already, this deal is already done, he said, that's going to happen. So those lanes will be added, and then the, then the forelating of the Boulevard if we pass that thing. And, uh, so anyway, I thought I'd pass that along.
Just so a, as a reminder, what we anticipate it costing the city if it doesn't pass, I'm not saying support it, don't, do what you want, but it looks like four hundred thousand and seven dollars is what we would anticipate for losing for, when it goes into effect.
Annually.
Annual, yes, annually. Cal, oh, uh, the census, I've already got my census and completed it online, it took five minutes, if you, be on the lookout in the mail, they're coming in, it'll take five minutes, and it's the simplest thing in the world to do, so please, when you get it, fill it out, and we're already promoting that, um, everywhere we can. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment about, uh, putting two more lanes in on the Boulevard. I believe it was the first year I was sitting in this chair, we addressed that with the Highway Department and federal officials, too. And, um, I thought it was a great idea, and one of the things that we were told is, no, it can't happen, because we would have a major traffic jam at the four thirty into the Boulevard. And of course, I asked them, what do you mean? And they said, well, it's not practical for us to put in another uh, acceleration lane on the four thirty. You know, we can't do that, because we'd, then they have to widen the bridge for the extra acceleration lane. So it was cost prohibitive at that time, so we've tried that once before, and it, we got shot down. That's just information for you, so don't get yoked up.
Lane that they're going to be putting in now, though. That might have changed with an extra lane that they're going to be doing with the restriping.
All they're going to do is restripe it and make, take away the safety lane and make them narrower, but you still have to have two acceleration lanes from the Boulevard. Is, that's what they were saying. And they said, if you do that, because of federal laws, if you've got two acceleration lanes, they have to lead into two lanes on the bridge, and the bridge is not wide enough for acceleration lanes. So, they didn't want to widen the bridge. Now, they may have changed now, I'm just giving you back information, so.
Thank you, sir, Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I'm not going to ask for it tonight in any way, but, uh, at some point, I'll ask the city attorney to address what does fair and equal treatment under the law mean, and, and provide some examples, but not tonight. under the law mean and provide some examples, but not tonight.
Glad it's not tonight.
Any more council member comments? Madam City Attorney?
Just quickly, the courts are also on a modified schedule. We will not have any trials or plea and arraignment docket until after April 1st, at least at this point. We will keep having a jail docket, so we'll take care of the people who are in custody in the county jail.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
No, sir.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. We are adjourned. It's two hours and 30 minutes. Oh, you forgot to hit record, do it over?
Let's keep it going.
No, who motioned and who seconded?